Commission, we are live, so you may start whenever you'd like.
Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, if you would please proceed.
Please pray with me. Father, we are so grateful for this season of renewal and rebirth and all that that represents. We ask, Father, for your presence in this meeting today as we go about the business of this wonderful county in which we live. We ask this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Thank you very much. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as published.
Motion is made for the approval of the agenda as published. Discussion. I would like to ask, because there are a number of items here that have citizens participating, two that occur to me are the Liberty Historic Downtown issue, and then there's another one having to do with a property tax. Are there, what I want to do is if there are citizens who have taken the time to attend today's meeting, I want to make sure that we move those items up so that we are respectful of your time. Are there any citizens here who are, or are going to want to speak on either of those two issues? Are there any citizens here who, and I think there's some people here, there's some discussion items, but are there any citizens here who would like to discuss, who are here for any other specific issues? All right. Well, seeing none, I don't have a problem then with the order of our agenda. I just want to make sure we didn't have someone sitting through a lot of extraneous issues. With that, further discussion on approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any alterations or changes or any other issues? Okay, very well. Commissioner Thompson, if you would like to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next currently scheduled commission meeting will be a commission business session this coming Wednesday, April the 14th, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Honorary resolutions, there aren't unlisted on today's agenda. That brings us to discussion items. We have one discussion item. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, that discussion item is presented by the collector, who's asking for the authority to present revised city contracts.
For distribution to all of you guys.
Thank you.
These are additional members of the public.
The collector is getting, I'll be recognizing the collector in a moment. Just as a reminder, as we go along, anyone who cares to address the commission, when we've come up to an item or during the non-agenda items, the podium is there. Please make sure that the light is green by pushing the button. Please make sure that you speak into the microphone and identify yourself. We have video recordings, but we are also on audio. That way we can keep track of who is speaking and we can understand what goes on these meetings. With that, Madam Collector, if you'd like to proceed.
Yes, Lydia McAvoy, Clay County Collector. Our current city contracts have been in effect, some of them since my very first year in office, 2011, and I think all of them were finalized by 2013, so they already needed maybe some refreshing. But the state auditor, specifically when they audited my office, which by the way, we got a good rating, but one of their recommendations was to get them updated and specifically to clarify that they are perpetually renewing. That was always the intent, and the language did allow for that, but we're going to put perpetual right across the top of the front page so that it makes it more clear for the state auditor. But since we have the opportunity to do that, there are several priorities that I would like to address with city contracts. And the reason I'm doing it as a discussion item right now, we have a draft that has been reviewed by county council, and there aren't any glaring issues. We could present that at this time, but I need permission, and the day I get permission, I need to start immediately submitting it to the cities, because for example, Kansas City is setting their budget right now, and other cities are making their plans for 2021. And so we need to make sure that we are presenting a unified document to them from the very beginning that is backed by our commission, so that they know exactly what they're getting. It is very important that we collect for every city on exactly the same terms and conditions, just for our office and for fairness to them. So, first thing that we want to clarify, no expiration date, perpetual. There's always an option for either party to cancel, so that, it really doesn't change anything from the current contracts, but it makes it clearer. When we first started collecting, some of the little cities were very nervous that we would pull the rug out from under them, and so they wanted it to say a three-year term or a four-year term, but it always said perpetually renewing if we didn't cancel. But that term is what confused the auditor, so there's like no term in there now, it just says perpetual. And I think they would probably agree with me at this point that we're not going to pull the rug out from under them, since we've collected for them for so many years and it's gone well. One thing that has happened piecemeal over the years, the contracts were very clear upfront that it was only ad valorem taxes, because there are all kinds of little fees and extra items that cities always want us to collect, and we were nervous about taking those on, not knowing what they were going to give us and when. Over the years, as we've become more comfortable, we've allowed them to kind of give us stuff on an ad hoc basis, and if we could collect it, we did it. So we need to clarify that, clean it up, make sure that we have a list for each city, what we're collecting, you know, so that we know. And that if there's an amendment where we take on something new, we're happy to do that, but that we need it in writing, we need a record to keep in our contract book, so that we know exactly what we're collecting for them. One specific item is PACE collections. The, there is a bill pending right now in the Missouri legislature that would already remove the obligation of the county collector to collect those and would allow either the county or the city to do it. So this may end up being a moot point after August 28th, because that bill is gaining quite a bit of traction. It has a lot of other corrections to PACE, which are sorely needed. But what the approach that a lot of other collectors in Missouri have done is, collectors without a city as big as Kansas City and their county frankly, is we don't have to collect ad valorem taxes. That is an option. The statute does say we have to collect PACE. So what they've said is, if you make us collect PACE, we won't collect ad valorem taxes. And not to play hardball, but that is an option that we have. And so the way we're wording it is, if you want us to collect PACE, in exchange for us collecting your ad valorem taxes, you just have to collect your own PACE assessments. There's only like 200 in Kansas City, so, and that's the biggest one. So it shouldn't be too much of a burden on them, and it just returns that collection to them, which like I said, may be completely allowable by statute anyway, but it would be allowable under a contract negotiation. The next thing is the fee structure. Once again, they were very nervous at the beginning about, you know, paying a huge chunk of funding to the county and losing their property tax revenue. We are by far way lower than any other county. Every other county in Missouri charges a specific additional percentage for this. We had only kept it to the exact 1% that was already done by statute, and then the commission split that 1% with my office. So my proposal would be to restore the full 1% to the general fund, and then have the additional half percent that's currently split between the 305 Fund and TMF to be payable to the TMF. The 305 Fund was established because we were looking at that huge software project that Kathy and I worked on for so many years, that, and so that expense isn't pending as much anymore. That's again, again, we were very afraid of that expense and how much it was going to be, and that deal has passed, so we don't need necessarily to segregate into the 305 Fund anymore. One other thing that we're specifically doing is some administrative fees to the offices, and specifically the assessor. They've mentioned over the years that TIFs and other special taxing districts are just sort of dumped on them at various times of the year, and a lot of times the boundaries and the descriptions and what we're supposed to do as far as splitting up the tax dollars isn't very clear, and they've had a hard time sometimes getting clarity from the economic development authorities in the various cities. And so we're trying to push back a little bit here on that and require, under the contract, that they just simply make it clear what parcels they want this district to apply to, what they want us to do with the money, you know, that kind of a thing, and put a small fee to the assessor's office for each one of those. So I want to clarify, for all of this fee structure, Kansas City is 77% of our city collections. So, and they have the most TIFs as well. So most of the burden of this is going to fall on them. I'm not saying that that's okay, but they are more able to handle it, I think, because of the massive amounts of dollars that we collect for them, and they don't have to do anything to collect them. I really believe the impact would be less than an employee to collect their own taxes. So for the smaller cities, that it should be absolutely minimal, especially if they don't have a TIF, which is most of the smaller cities don't have a TIF. And then we wanted to just put some deadlines and documentation requirements. Again, the TIFs, the levy rates, because various cities, especially Kansas City, is charter, they, under their charter, say they don't have to set a levy by a certain date, but we're asking them to try to get that levy to us earlier, because it makes it so that we can't even bill taxes. Obviously, if they have, if that's impossible, they can push back on us and we can talk to them about that, but we need those levy rates sooner than we've been getting them, and then also just special assessments, again, that they're documented. And then the one last thing that I think is very important, right now, this is a three-party contract, the elected collector, the county, and the city. And since this, my office will transition in 2023, I wanted to make sure that there was verbiage in the contract right now that would merge the collector's obligation and the county's obligation at that time. So, and I don't know that it matters necessarily exactly what time, just that there's merger in there, so that the contracts would not necessarily have to be renegotiated at that time unless, you know, the administration wanted to. So those are the priorities, and I guess the reason I'm bringing this to you is, we have a form, if anyone has specific issues, and any of you as commissioners or anyone in the public that either doesn't like one of these or has some other priority that they'd like included, we'd like to come forward with a strong draft that we're ready to present to the city at the next work session, and hopefully have the wrinkles ironed out before that time, so that it should be able to be approved, you know, on a rather quick basis, so that we can get it out to the city. So I'm just trying to get the cart in front of the horse a little bit here, and see if there are any objections or concerns.
Thank you very much. Now, just to, first off, thank you for being here, and thank you for putting together the information sheet you distributed. I'm not sure if anybody heard when you brought it up, but there are copies at the end of the table here of the presentation that the collector made, so if anybody would like a copy, certainly feel free to help yourself. Process-wise, so really, you're going to be making some proposals, and county council will be putting those into, into shape to present to the commission at some future point. Is that pretty much the procedure that we're looking at? And what you're doing is, is making recommendations on some of the things that you would like to see included or tweaked in that contract that we would be forwarding. I think it's a really good idea for us to have a consistent contract for all the cities. It just, it has an air of fairness, plus it's, it makes life so much simpler when you're treating everybody pretty much the same way. So, let me see. I have some questions, but let me go ahead and open it up to the, to the other commissioners. Commissioner Thompson, did you have any questions that you would like to ask?
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually don't have the time. I appreciate you bringing this up and bringing it before us. But yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay with questions right now.
Thank you very-
And as always, since we're all getting along now, if any of the commissioners have any just emails they want to shoot me over the next couple of weeks, I'd be happy to just discuss individually if something occurs to you, or if you're out talking to cities and something, you know, somebody mentions something, just feel free to shoot me an email.
Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any questions you thought you'd like to express?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for the presentation and this information. First of all, on the auditor's recommendations in terms of updating some of this, which of, which of these items, or did any of these items specifically get recommended by the auditor, or did they just generically recommend updating them?
Yes. So we, you know, when we first started this process, it was a little bit of fits and starts, and we started with some very small cities, and so we had that term of office, or that term of collections thing in there. And it did say renewing, but that confused them. So specifically, that it is very, very clear that they are perpetual unless canceled, that there's no term, because the cities wanted to guarantee that we would do it for like three or four years, but there was always a cancellation provision. So it really is exactly the same for them, but they thought that they could somehow then bind us to a three or four-year process, which they, they still can do, just as long as nobody cancels. So there was that. The other thing was, we have been collecting every city on the same terms and conditions since Kansas City came on. Before Kansas City came on, some of the smaller cities, we were charging a higher fee, because the revenue from them was so small, it really didn't pay for the program at all. Once Kansas City came on, there was plenty of money to handle anything that we need, you know, the revenue to the county was adequate to handle anything we would need. And so we have been collecting on the same terms and conditions, but some of the paperwork wasn't clear on that. Some of these little cities, it's difficult to even find the clerk or know how to get to a meeting. And so we, let's put it this way, we could not produce a paper contract signed by the city when the state auditor asked. We were in fact collecting for them by a contract, and it was agreed, and there were commission resolutions that had approved that, but we couldn't actually produce the paper contract anymore after 10 years. I guess that's, that was, so, and so the one paper contract that they did have had a different fee structure showing on it. This is obviously not the one that's currently in effect, but they were concerned, because that was the paperwork we had. We didn't have the full proper copies of every contract for some of the smaller cities.
Yeah, gotcha. No, that sounds, sounds like a thing to fix for sure. So just to clarify, the, the changes to PACE and then the, the changes to, you know, the 305 Fund and that sort of thing, those weren't specifically recommended by the auditor?
Nope, not at all. Some of those were things I had already been, I have been wanting to revisit city contracts for a while, but I just wanted to wait for a better, you know, political atmosphere to make sure that we could get a proper airing of all the issues.
Sure, makes sense. On the, the administrative fees to, that you, that you mentioned that will impact Kansas City the most, but the other cities to a more minimal degree, do you have some sense of how much money we're talking on that?
Absolutely. There's a fee of $3,000 to the collector, and that's totaled from all jurisdictions. So 77% of $3,000 would come from Kansas City. So that's the smallest amount. Then the TIF plans, we have right now, written into the contract, a fee of $1,500 per plan that they want the assessor to collect, because that was an indication, and I have talked to the assessor's real estate department head as well, that seemed fair to them for the excessive administration time that they have to put in for that. Obviously, that's negotiable. I mean, we just, you know, that seemed like a good number, but I mean, there's nothing in statute that would demand that number.
Yeah.
So again, you're talking, I mean, I don't know how many TIF plans Kansas City has in Clay County. Off the top of my head, it's probably a dozen. And so less than $20,000 total maybe to Kansas City, 25, you know, we're talking, you know, and then the other cities, their share of the 3,000 will be about, you know, $5, and they won't have any TIFs. So we're talking a small amount, as far as that's concerned. The biggest hit to them will be the restoring the full 1% to the general fund, but still, we collect $89 million total for the cities, and 77% of that is Kansas City's. So any impact of even tens of thousands of dollars is small. I'm not, I'm sure they consider it significant and want, and will want to discuss it with us, and that's fine. I'm not, you know, trying to ignore their concerns, but percentage-wise, it's still an extremely small percentage for the benefit that they're getting of their revenue.
Oh, I totally agree.
Flowing in without ever having to think about it.
Yeah, if you're talking 20,000 a year, I mean, obviously, that's a, a pretty minimal impact.
Well, that's for the fees. I want to be clear, that the 1% of the general fund will, there is, there is an increase there, and they, you know, but it's more than $20,000. But it's still, not even a, I don't, it's a fraction of a percent, of a point, like a very small fraction. I can't do the math off the top of my head right this minute, but a very small amount for them.
Very good. Thank you. And then, and then lastly, on the PACE change, so you mentioned House Bill 697 has passed out of the House, and maybe it'll pass the Senate. I mean, of course, you know, most legislation that passes the House doesn't necessarily pass the, you know, go through the full process. So if it were to not do so, how would that impact your item here?
Well, I'm using the contract language that is in effect in several other counties that have had this issue, which is basically, there's a bargain-for-exchange by contract language that is separate from statute, saying, if you want us to collect your ad valorem taxes, which we don't have to do, you agree to take back on this obligation that statute would have put on us for this item that you opted into. For example, the county has not opted into PACE. There are no PACE liens in the county, and the county specifically rejected it. And then Kansas City, without any participation from us, because it wouldn't have been required, opted into it. That's fine, that's prerogative, but that puts a burden on the county collector, because I collect their taxes, and actually, it would put that burden on me whether I did or not. So there's a bargain-for-exchange there, that if you want me to collect the ad valorems, then you take back these liens and collect them. And so it would be allowed under contract negotiation, most likely, regardless of the statutory provision, but then the statutory provision is going to make that argument even stronger. I've tried to push back on them for years. Just a brief history, PACE liens are, for there being only 200 in Kansas City, one of the biggest customer service issues in my office, and the statute fixes a lot of those issues as well. There's just been some unbelievable abuses underneath that, under that statute of taxpayers and the way they've been treated and a misunderstanding of what they're getting into, and, and then it's on a tax bill, and so then it's, you know, written in stone and all that. And so I've been trying to push back on them for a while, and I needed to renegotiate the city contract in order to make that happen. I, I know they haven't, I know they don't want to lose ad valorem collections, and I think the collection of 200 PACE assessments shouldn't be that difficult. We also collect, I mean, they collect for themselves their drainage, their demolition, all those. They collect them themselves first, and then give the balance to us when it becomes delinquent. So I don't think it's going to be any difficulty for them to try to do that.
Got it. So if the legislation doesn't pass, and we were to not include this language in the updated contract, what would the status be at that point?
I would still have the, the liens that I collect on my books. I've already got them from the past several years. So the, the interesting thing is the liens are collected, although there's a large lien amount out there recorded against the property, because they're collected on property tax bills, there's an annual amount that is certified to me. So there should be able to be a clean break, even on the accounts that I've been collecting, saying, okay, then those stay on the books, you know, obviously, anything that's in existence right now stays on the books, but when we get that bill certified to us later this year for the new installment, then that would go back to the city. And legally, it shouldn't make a difference in the ultimate collection of the lien, because both cases, they're going to have the, the effect and authority of being on a tax bill, a tax lien. There's no question it has first lien priority and all of that. So whoever collects it isn't really impacting the authority of the lien itself.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
By the way, congratulations on the results of the audit. I think you mentioned that at the top of your comments, so we're obviously very gratified to hear that. On, so really, a lot of what we're doing is just looking at this, and there are some changes, but not too many. On the elimination of the 305 Fund, I assume that the auditor has been, consultant is up to speed on it to some degree.
I have not mentioned that to him, so we can, he and I can talk about that separately.
And we can, we can make sure-
And if he has any, so the 305 Fund was also established initially, it was absolutely for that big technology project, but the commission was concerned about putting such a large amount of revenue directly into the TMF, because the collector's office has complete authority over that. So there was a concern, and that was part, so we segregated part of it for a specific purpose.
Right.
I don't have any objection to that. It's just that the particular purpose that we did it for at the time doesn't exist anymore. But if the commission was again concerned about there being a large flow of revenue to a fund that I'm, you know, I'm the only one that can control, keep in mind, this was also my first year in office, when we were having this, this first and second year in office, so there was no trust level built, there was no history on what we had used the TMF for, or any of that. So whatever the commission would want to do, I'm not against the accountability. It's just that the resource that we were setting it aside for no longer exists. We do still use it for small software expenses in our small, smaller than millions of dollars, but those, we would just use the TMF to pay those. You know, it's really six of one, half dozen of the other now, because we don't have the huge project that we're saving for.
Well, I look forward to, to both the county council and county administrator to working on this, and at some future point, making a presentation to the commission. Obviously, there's some things like the, the fate and the ultimate disposal of 697 that will impact what we're, what we're going about, but I think it's good that we are making some clarifications on this and, and just getting it ready for, for an update. So-
My, my goal would be to present a contract that we would be ready for you to look at for approval at the next work session, since that's two weeks from now. Hopefully, we would have the opportunity, especially since there's already been a draft looked at by county council, so.
Well, we look forward to seeing that. Are there any other comments or questions? Any comments from anyone present? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. And that concludes the discussion item. That brings us to public hearings. There aren't unlisted. This being a work session, we do not have a consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda, that brings us to our first issue, which is 2021-99. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-99 is to prove a temporary use permit to be placed on the parcel 10602000300101, at approximately 10212 Northeast 120th Street. That's from Planning and Zoning. I'll let them make further comment.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, if you would proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a request for a temporary use permit to be able to place a construction job trailer on the approximately 105 acres. It's an ag zone property. The applicant would like to be able to use that trailer, which would have a restroom in it while he tends to the, to the ag uses of that land. The 2011 Land Development Code does not allow an accessory building with a bathroom to be built unless there's a home on the property. It's my understanding that the applicant just wants this as a temporary use for a specific period of time. One consideration would be, we would want to make sure that the, the book properly, either approved by the Clay County Health Department, or hauled by a licensed contractor that could haul it to an approved septic system. Mr. Olman is in attendance today and has some additional comments, and myself, and he would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Do you, what is the, I realize you can't necessarily nail it down to a day, although possibly, but what is the, what's the projected time that this would be in place?
Mr. Olman indicated that possibly a year, so not too long, and I would recommend that we put a, put a timeframe on it, and if he needs to extend it, we could come back before the commission.
I think that makes sense. Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any questions at this point? Mr. Thompson?
No, I don't.
Yes, if the applicant would, would like to come forward and speak, certainly he is welcome.
I'm John Olman. I live at 12911 North Homer Road. It's approximately nine blocks from the farm, and I will be moving from there into town. That's why, one of the reasons we would like to have a bathroom facility there. Also, with our cattle, we do- we would like to have a bathroom facility there. Also, with our cattle, we do artificial incuminating and stuff, and we would like a sterile, clean area so we could have hot water and stuff like that. And we will have the sewage pumped out weekly or on a basis that needs to be by a licensed sanitary company to take it out. We are in the process of trying to get a house plan going and to put a house on it, but with the times right now and the capability of construction and stuff, it's a good year away before you can even think about a house. So, and that's why we want to put something out there. If you have any questions.
Yeah, what would be the ultimate use of this building? Once you've gotten construction complete, what would be, would this be taken out? Would it?
Yes, it would be taken out, yes. It'll just be rental. I have a, if you guys want this, shows the, the office trailer and size and everything if you're.
We, yeah, we, we'll go ahead and, we'll get a copy, if you want to submit that. Is that our copy?
Yes.
We'll pass it around, then we can possibly make copies for everybody as we go. While we're looking at that document, Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
I do, no.
If we could make copies that distribute later. And so I think the idea of a time period had come up. Is that something that you feel comfortable with as far as a year? Does that sound like a reasonable period?
I think it is. I think a year is a really good timeframe for us to decide and get, get the ball rolling on a, on a house there.
Okay. As you're aware, this is a work session, so this, the disposition of this issue, as with all issues, will not be necessarily approved or disapproved at this meeting, but to either put it on consent agenda for our next meeting or on regular agenda for possible passage and certainly for consideration. So just so you're aware of the process.
Okay. Do you know the time?
Yes. The next meeting will be Wednesday, next Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
At this location.
Okay.
Question I have is, Mr. Counselor, if we are going to add a time period on this, does that take it out of consideration for consent?
It, it does not. You just, you would just say consent with the addition of this.
Very good.
If that's the pleasure of the commission.
Very good. Would that require, that would not require an amendment. That would just require that.
That's just direction.
As the motion.
Yeah.
To put it on for consent. Okay. Very well. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything that you'd like to ask the applicant?
I don't. No, thank you for coming and talking to us today, and, yeah, hopefully, we'll get this taken care of for you and.
Okay, thank you.
Get the building.
Commissioner Carpenter? All right. Is there a, is there a sense of the commission to add a one-year period, and in addition to that, to put it on consent agenda? If somebody would like to, I'll just express it. So Commissioner Thompson, is that something that you would be okay with?
I would be fine with that, Commissioner.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Absolutely. Sounds good to me.
Very well. So 2021-99 will be placed on consent agenda for our next meeting with the addition of a one-year deadline that we will be getting back on. That brings us to 2021-90. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-90 is to, is to approve a subaward adjustment number five for the 2019 Title II Formula Grant with the Missouri Department of Public Safety. That's with, that's from the juvenile department.
Very well. Is there anyone here to discuss this? Is there a motion on 2021-90? I'm sorry, no, no, I'm, I'm jumping ahead here. So this is basically accepting a grant.
If you might, so this is a program that's already in place. There is a spending award related to this in an amount of $47,586. The next ordinance that will come will be to approve the, the moving of those dollars into that. So this is largely procedural.
Okay, so these are kind of, the next one is going to be rather related to it then?
Correct.
Very good. Would the commission like to see this, was there any discussion on this before we asked about consent or regular agenda for next week? Any questions?
No, no, no discussion. In terms of consent or not, I'm fine with it going consent. I mean, there is an allocation of funds here, but as our administrator said, being fairly procedural, I'm fine with it going on consent for what that's worth.
I, I would agree. The, usually, the idea of, of movement of money is something that, that I am, I'm a little less inclined to go consent, but I agree with you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm, I'm comfortable with consent.
Very well. 2021-90 will go on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 21. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 Ordinance 21 is to reallocate those dollars from one fund to a different fund so that those dollars can be spent. Again, this is attached to an award that was originally accepted two, two commission sessions, or two commission years ago, excuse me. It's just a reallocation of funds.
This is obviously, as the administrator said, related to our last issue. Is there any objection to 2021 Ordinance 21 being placed on consent for our next meeting?
I'm comfortable with it.
Sounds good.
That brings us to 2021-91. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-91 is to approve a sole source vendor, which is Lexipol LLC. That is a resource for a law enforcement policy manual, and this is submitted by the Sheriff's Department, which I know is here to comment on that.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. Before you today is a request to renew the sole source status for Lexipol, which is the company that we use for our online policy manual, both for law enforcement and for our detention center. It's two separate custody, I'm sorry, it's two separate policy manuals, and we have been using Lexipol for about, well, since 2013. And so we're just requesting that, that contract, or I'm sorry, that that sole source status be renewed.
And the reason for the sole source is that they've been doing it so long, it, it would be difficult and expensive to change horses if there's nothing?
It really would, and there's the benefit that there are state-specific legal, legal input, legal vetting through this company for our policies. And so not only do they meet any federal or, or state guidelines, they're going to be, I mean, federal guidelines, constitutional, obviously, but they're going to be specific to Missouri as well.
Are there any questions from the commission? Anybody from the public like to weigh in? Seeing none. What would the, how would the commission like to dispose of 2021-91?
I mean, just for the aforementioned reason, I think leaving it on regular agenda probably makes the most sense personally.
I, I think, I think that makes sense. Commissioner Thompson, are you good with this going on regular?
I'm good with that.
Very good.
That brings us to 2021-92. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-92 is to approve an inter-agency cooperative agreement with the Ray County Sheriff's Office, again, related to some fleet equipment, IT equipment, and vehicles as well. The Sheriff's Department can further comment.
Please proceed.
All right. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. We are coming to you today to make what I believe is going to be a final request for transfer of surplus property from the Clay County Sheriff's Office to the Ray County Sheriff's Office, and we are looking at transferring some detention supplies, totes, jumpsuits, some suicide blankets and smocks, and some printers. I think there are five in total, and three vehicles with, with the installed emergency equipment. Oh, and with me, with me, I have Captain Andrea Kryling from the Ray County Sheriff's Office to speak to this, and probably also to speak to some previous decisions the commission has made.
Very well. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Andrea Kryling. I'm with, I'm the captain with the Ray County Sheriff's Department. I first want to start off and say thank you guys for everything that you guys have helped us with here recently. I know Scott, the sheriff, has been here previously and kind of told you the situation that we were left when he took office. And I don't think that any of us at the department can tell you how grateful we are for everything that you guys have done and continue to do, from you guys as the commissioners to Amy, the sheriff. We've made phone calls to, I think, about every department that Clay County has, asking for assistance when we took in, and everybody's been super helpful. So we are very appreciative of everyone that works here. And then, in regards to what's on the agreement today, just to give you a little background, I know you guys have heard it before, but our jail was left in very bad shape when we took office. We actually had no suicide smocks at all, no suicide blankets. The, the wool blankets that you guys are, you know, willing to possibly donate, ours currently had holes in them. I mean, they hadn't been replaced in many, many years. So, and with the equipment, I mean, we have 12 patrolmen that are, are using one printer, so if it goes down, we have nothing. So we would be greatly appreciative to anything that you guys would continue to assist us with. Do you guys have any questions or?
Are there any questions from the commission to the captain?
No.
No?
All right. Thank you guys again.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate the, the work that all our law enforcement does. Certainly, folks in Ray County have, have challenges that you've risen to, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Oh, does she, ah, I see you, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were needing to return. Please go ahead.
No, I'm just back up here because I know I have something else.
Oh, okay, very good. Yes, please, Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Captain. In terms of these vehicles, what, and I know we did this once before, but what would the normal disposition of these vehicles be if we were to not donate them to Ray County?
Yes, the normal disposition of these vehicles would be that we would send them to auction, where they historically don't bring very much money at all.
Okay. And, and why, I'm just curious, why do they not bring money at auction?
You know, I don't know. I, I don't know why they don't bring in, you know, as much money as we would hope, because clearly, we would not be giving these vehicles or requesting that they be transferred to another law enforcement agency to be put in service if they were non-functioning. But it's just the return on the investment, when you look at what cash you could get in hand back to the county versus putting that vehicle in service for law enforcement purpose in an adjacent county where we're going to be getting, honestly, a really good return on our investment, because I know that they would like to use a couple of these vehicles for a driver training that we need instructors certified in. And if they can provide that, because they have a certified instructor and can use a couple of these vehicles as training for that and provide us training back, that's a win for everybody.
Absolutely. So, and, and I, and I'm truly grateful that we're able to help the folks of Ray County and, you know, our fellow Missourians who live there. Do we have any sense, though, I mean, we've now done this several times, do we have any sense of, in total, if, how much more is, you know, coming in the future?
From Ray County? Nothing. I have one more item on the agenda today, and I believe this is going to be the last request for surplus transfer that I have. And, you know, we can speak to as to why there is so much surplus, but that, it's, it's many, many years of being conditioned by the previous commission to grab onto resources and hold on to them as long as we possibly can for fear that we would not be getting replacements. And now we are in a position that we have, we, we plan to purchase three vehicles this year. We're not adding large numbers to our fleet. We're trying to, as I heard another county employee say yesterday, and I'm stealing this phrase, "We're going to right-size some things."
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Does, do, does the commission have any other further questions or comments? Seeing none. Do, does the commission want to go consent or regular agenda on this?
I'm comfortable with consent.
I'm fine with that as well.
Very well. 2021-92 will appear on the consent, consent agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to 2021-93. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-93 is that reference that the captain made to the one last request. It's to approve an inter-agency cooperative agreement with the Monata County Sheriff's Office, and I'll refer to the Sheriff's Office for further comment.
Please proceed.
All right. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office, to present what I hope to be the last request for surplus property, and I'm really happy to be able to bring this one to you. This request is to transfer the final three vehicles of the vehicles that we would have sent to surplus anyway or to auction, and we were asked by Monata County Sheriff, Anthony Wheatley, who is here with me today to speak to you, about a request for some vehicles, because his agency was in dire need of assistance as well. These three vehicles are Crown Victorias. They are no longer part of our fleet. They come with the attached and installed emergency equipment that is no longer compatible with our fleet vehicles. And so I'd like to turn it over to Sheriff Wheatley to speak.
Before you leave, are there any questions, before we proceed with the next witness? Please proceed, Sheriff.
First of all, I want to thank you all for letting me speak to you about these vehicles. I'm Sheriff Tony Wheatley with Monata County Sheriff's Office, and for those who don't know, we are on, located two and a half hours east of here on Highway 50 between Sedalia and Jefferson City. We're a small rural agency. We cover 419 square miles, and we have 12 full-time road deputies, two SROs, two court security guys, and that's, and a jail that holds 50 inmates, and that's about it. The reason I'm here today is we've had, during our budgets this year, our budget, our total budget for the Sheriff's Office and jail, and us ROs, and the courthouse, is a total of 1.3 million. And as you all know as commissioners, that doesn't go very far. This year, we decided we had a choice between trying to get a bunch of equipment or try to piece together some of the old equipment that we have and try to keep our deputies employed. So we opted to keep the deputies on instead of getting new equipment. We had the choice, one or the other, and I think that's the right choice to protect our citizens, citizens, is to keep deputies on the street instead of having to cut back. The problem with that was shortly after the first of the year, I had three vehicles go down at the same time. I had all three Dodge Chargers that we bought, we buy used vehicles from the Highway Patrol, and we've had these vehicles for three-plus years, and they've got 160,000 or 70,000 miles on them. I had three of them go down, all within two weeks, with motors out of them. So we're scrambling now, hot-seeing cars, trying to keep deputies on the road and patrolling, and I happened to talk to the Sheriff Aiken at the sheriff's conference, and he said he had some surplus vehicles that he might be able to try to let us use. They're old, they're 2011 Crown Victorias, which they no longer make, but we have a Crown Victoria in our fleet now that we still use, and this got 200,000 miles on it, but it still runs. So we are hoping to try to utilize these three Crown Victorias. We're going to put, right now, we have to put them on the front lines, frontline road vehicles to get deputies in cars to patrol. And then after that, we don't, we do not plan on getting rid of them. We plan on rotating them down after we can get some more vehicles secured later on this year, early next year. One of the vehicles, we have slated to rotate down from road to our school for our school resource officers. The, the kids are going to a fundraiser to try to get that thing wrapped, maybe with the school logo and stuff. maybe with the school logo and stuff like that, for the school resource officer, and the other two vehicles, after they're taken off the road for our use, are going to be used for, try to use them as our admin vehicles, because my clerk and jail administrator, her vehicle now is making noise, so it's got 257,000 miles on it, so it's about to go down, so. We, I appreciate y'all letting me talk to you about this, and we appreciate anything y'all can do for us, thank you.
Are there any questions of the Sheriff? Thank you very much. Captain, I did have a question, you'd said that these were not part of the fleet, I'm sorry, Captain, not Sheriff, that's okay. Is it due to the miles, is it, why are they not part of the fleet? Could you kind of fill us in a little bit on where these? Yeah?
Absolutely, so as Sheriff Wheatley explained, we tend to rotate vehicles through our fleet for different purposes as we acquire new vehicles, and that's what the Clay County Sheriff's Office has done as well. So we purchased those new in 2010 or 2011, I mean, they're 2011, you know, it depends on what time of the year you grab those up, but those would have been put on frontline in Road Patrol service at that time, and then as new vehicles came into the fleet, which has been replaced with SUVs for the Road Patrol and for civil fugitive, most of the people who do, like inmate transfers and things like that, the Crown Victorias, just due to age and older miles, they'll get rotated from Road Patrol service to RS, our School Resource Unit, and then they will go to the fleet. And the fleet, honestly, the fleet was so large when I took over this position, that we just couldn't justify keeping that many vehicles parked in a parking lot. So that's, that's what these remaining six vehicles that I'm presenting today are, they are serviceable vehicles, but they're being wasted in our lot.
Yeah, the reason, the other thing that occurs to me is that I, you know, it's an easier, they're easier dots to connect when we send these to Ray County, being adjacent County, Monata County, obviously is some distance away, so that was one of the things that occurred to me. Are, does, does the right sizing of the fleet, has that a result of new vehicles being purchased and brought online for our Sheriff's Department?
I believe the right sizing is more an issue of looking at what we actually need, and I don't believe we needed 20 fleet vehicles sitting in a parking lot
Yeah.
that weren't being used on a regular basis, but again, because we were so fearful that we would not be able to replace vehicles with the previous Commission, should we need to, we had to, I mean, we had to hoard, and I don't believe that that's the relationship we have anymore.
Very good.
You can't see me smiling, yay masks, but I am smiling.
Are there any other questions from any of the other Commissioners, or the Captain? Okay. Is there, is there an inclination of the Commission to place 2021 on either the consent or regular agenda at this time?
I'm good with regular.
Regular agenda?
Fine.
Very well, this will go on the regular agenda for next week?
I apologize, okay, yeah, I think we did the last one on consent, and I, what I meant was keeping it on consent, consistent with that one.
That's no problem. Commissioner Thompson, are you okay with consent?
I am perfectly fine with consent.
Very well.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. That brings us to 2021-97, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-97 is to approve an agreement for appraisal services with J.F. Ryan Associates, Inc., and that's from the Assessor's Office, I don't know if anybody from the Assessor's Office is here, so just simply to briefly state, I think this is to come out of the Assessor's Budget, and it's to arrange, make an arrangement with this particular organization for a State Tax Commission hearing relative to the Leclerc Gas case, and Leclerc, excuse me, Leclerc Gas is now known as Spire, but that's what this is relative to, and I think they just need to authorize that expenditure.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Is it, this is not, this is not, this is, is this a renewal, or is this a new contract?
It's not a renewal, it's a new range, it's a new relationship relative to this particular lawsuit that is going on.
Okay. Do either Commissioners have questions or comments at this moment?
I do not, no, thank you.
I do not.
I see a citizen has come forward, if that citizen could identify himself, you are here to speak on 2021-97, is that correct?
Yes.
Very well, please proceed.
My name is Bob Oaks in Gladstone, and I looked at this briefly, and it looked like a blank check. I don't see a limit of how much money you're going to spend, you say $250 an hour, I would think there'd be some kind of limits on that, is there a limit on that, or are we writing a blank check?
There is, paragraph two, I believe, has a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000.
That's not listed in the agenda though, right?
No, it's on, it's on the agreement.
Are you saying that $25,000 is what that is? How much is it?
On the agenda?
What is, what?
I'm looking at the actual contract.
All right, so the amount, the maximum amount is how much?
$25,000.
Okay, well, I did see that $25,000, it just wasn't clear that that was associated with that $250 an hour.
Yeah, it's $250 an hour with a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, do you think it says that in that? I didn't read it to say that, it didn't look like it was connected, that's what I had, why I had the question, so.
If, just for clarification, I could, I just, because it's only a couple of lines, number two reads, "Compensation for all professional appraisal services is invoiced at the rate of $250 per hour, plus related costs in the amount not to exceed $25,000 exclusive of travel expenses, there is no charge for travel time."
That says related costs, $25,000 is associated with related costs,
Yeah.
not with, not with per hour, that's how I read it, I mean, that's what it said, I'm sorry.
It's, to me, it's quite honestly-
It needs to be, well, you know, I'm glad it is $25,000, there should be a limit there.
It sounds a little ambiguous to me.
But that statement, do you agree that that statement does not say $25,000 is the limit for the $250 an hour, it says $25,000 is limited by your expenses?
I think it'd be-
It's just, it's just a minor thing, I'm glad you clarified, I'm glad it's $25,000.
It's $25,000.
Yeah, you know, but, yeah, okay, I don't want it to be misconstrued, because I was, I was a little confused when I read that.
No, no, appreciate it, I appreciate the fact that you, you're taking an interest in it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think I know what they mean, it does strike me as a little ambiguous, that concerns me a little bit, I think I'm maybe making more out of it than necessary, but it does feel that way.
Yeah, I mean, you know, legally, it looks fine to me, it seems like maybe an extra comma could, would have clarified things, but I-
I agree.
But beyond that, I think it's all right.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, I don't.
On these kind of matters, what we're talking about, you know, especially a new, a new contract, I would really like to see the requesting entity come before the Commission and explain it, I think that that warrants putting it on regular session for next time, myself, that doesn't say, that doesn't cast dispersions on, on the agreement or on anyone, but I think if we're going to have an agreement put before us that is forwarded by an entity, the entity needs to be here and make the case that this is something we should do.
It's also a new expenditure, and as a new expenditure, you know, I think it makes sense as a default to put it on regular, so I agree with you.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner Thompson?
I am.
Okay, that would put 2021-97 on for regular agenda for our next meeting. That brings us to 2021-89.
Commissioners, 2021-89 is to approve the memorandum of agreement for a 20-year lease with the Federal Aviation Administration, it's a recurring lease, I would have defer to someone from airport to speak on that.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commission, Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administrations, this lease through FAA is previous, that we've had before, for a navigation system, another 20-year lease that FAA puts in, as stalls continue to maintain no cost to the county, it is a guidance system for airplanes to land safely on our runway, and the pilots are much appreciative of that through all weather, and it's just a system that I think that there's a lot of areas here of airports that don't have like the system we have, and so with that agreement to extend it would be a great, great positive thing for our airport.
Thank you, and this extends it for how long?
20 years, the previous one was 20 years.
Of course, yeah, it's right there. Are there any questions from the Commission? I mean, it is obviously something vital, there is no cost accrued to the government, and it's, and it is a renewal, so I think consent, does that sound okay with everybody?
I'm good with that.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner? Very well, 2021-89 will be on consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-98, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-98 is to approve a donation and a cooperative agreement with the City of Missouri, City of Missouri, for the donation of a pump, Deputy Administrator Walters is still, I think, at the podium to make a comment on that.
Please proceed.
Again, Commission, Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administrations, the six-inch pump that we want to donate to Missouri City is one that we have used in the past to take care of floodwaters down in Missouri City, to maintain their floodgates, we have since, in the past four years, have upgraded our pump, this old pump originally came from surplus down in Jeff City, still working condition, but as I said, we updated our pump system, so we would like to donate this to Missouri City so that they can maintain their floodgates rather than using just two-inch pumps, and then keeps County, Clay County, so we can focus on other flood areas and they can maintain theirs unless it gets of severity, that we could go down there and assist with them, but with the six-inch, they could take care of it for a time, you know, a time period.
Right, so this would significantly increase their ability to deal with floodwaters.
That's, that is correct.
Okay, any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, once again, it seems like it would be apt for a consent agenda?
Agreed.
Very well, 2021-98 will appear on next week's, or, yes, next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-100, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-102 is to approve the IFB number 02-21, and this is a BRO project, a bridge replacement on northeast 188th Street over New Hope Creek, and I think Deputy Administrator Walters continues to have control of the podium, further comments?
He may proceed.
Good morning, Commission, Carl Walters, Deputy Director of Administrations, we went out for bid for a replacement bridge on 188th Street, to be replacement, the engineers drawed up the designs, it's a haunch bridge, also, we have a 90-degree curve that comes right off of it to the west, so with that being, the cost of it, as you see, is like a million eight, we have an historical school and church just past that and the other curve, so they're going to skew that bridge just a little bit with the curve because we couldn't get any right-of-way to disrupt that historical site, so with that, WPS has drawed up the engineering plans to make sure that we have the right bridge to take care of that curve access and to not disrupt that historical site.
So we are getting an 80% reimbursement under the BRO, and then the remaining 20%, we can use soft-match money to-
That is correct.
Okay, and I noticed, and I think you had mentioned also, that MoDOT has declared that to be an unsafe bridge.
Yes, we have two-year inspection plans with MoDOT that they come out and inspect our bridges, and that bridge has been closed for a time being, and so they've declared it unsafe, as we will with the next bridge, that it's closed down access for farmers, bus, bus people, that's around that Camp New Hope area, so they have the camping on one side, and they have the pool and stuff on their side, it's kind of made people go around, you know, in 15 minutes, we've calculated, it's 15 minutes around to the north to get the access to the other side of the road, so if we could get this process going, I think it would alleviate a lot of problems for a lot of people.
And what is the projected duration, or the completion date, I guess, say?
They have 365 days, once we give them the notice to proceed, after these meetings here, we'll give them that, then they'll give us a date that they can start, and from that point there, they have 365 days to complete it.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or thoughts you'd like to express?
Thank you, Commissioner, I actually don't have any questions, but I am very glad to see this bridge is on here, I received numerous inquiries about it and its unsafe condition, so I am very thrilled that this is on here.
I'm excited, too.
And we are underway on this project, so-
Yes.
Thank you very much, Carl, I do appreciate it.
You bet.
Yeah, thanks, Carl, and same, you know, it sounds like this is a long time coming in terms of getting this done, so I'm glad it is. In terms of the bid process, you know, this is a fairly significant project, right, at 1.8 million, and I, you know, I saw we only got two applicants, is that, is that typical? It feels like a low number to me to only receive two.
It is a low number, but here we're talking about a haunch bridge, and Missouri's not known for haunch bridges, and I wasn't here at the time that they indicated a haunch bridge, or we'd had a different plan. Kansas is known for haunch bridges, and when I say haunch bridge, the underneath side is curved, so that lets more of the water flow come through. It's pretty popular over there, and they get a lot of bids on it here, not so much, and it's also cost, since we don't have them around here, then the cost is significant, so hopefully we can get past that part of it and not have to go through another haunch bridge. When I say that, the next one is going to be the same, but hopefully we can get through that, and not have to have that expense.
So fewer firms do that type of bridge, is that what it comes down to?
Correct, not a lot, so there's just a couple of them that can do that.
I see, and in terms of, you're saying the previous administration team at the Highway Department determined to do the bridge that way, as a haunch bridge?
Correct.
Okay, and are, and are we fairly locked into doing that?
Yes, once we submit, once the engineers submitted those plans to MoDOT, there's no way of backing out on it, we, the expense would be high again to rebid that, go back out, redesign it and stuff, and there's no sense in walking over that again.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And I take it from that, that this is not going to be a trend continuing in Clay County, at least it would not be a recommendation that we would continue constructing this style of bridge.
That is correct.
Very good. Any further questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, this is obviously a significant expenditure of money and a major project, is there a, I would recommend that we put it on for regular, just because the fact it is just that significant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Thompson, are you okay with that?
I am, thank you.
Very good, so 2021-102 will be on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2021-94, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-94 is to approve IFB number 07-21, it's for citywide vending, for vending machine services throughout our county buildings. Donna, Assistant Deputy Administrator Kuntz is here to make further comments.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator for Facilities, yes, this is our county-wide bid for vending machine services, vending- Vending machines are located in our court areas for our jurors, people visiting in the detention facilities, within all the county facilities, and in our parks.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. No, and out of the three bidders, citywide was our best and lowest bidder for this, for our services.
And do, to tell you the truth, I'm not sure how those kinds of arrangements work. Do they essentially have them in the spaces, and then they collect the revenue from sales? Do we, what's the, what's our financial obligation here?
The vendor services the machines, fills the products, and then keeps a record for us for whatever money is collected, and we receive a percentage from the vending machines. It's a very low amount. We really do the vending machines as a service to our citizens that may be standing in line to pay their taxes and need some refreshment. And obviously, our county employees occasionally appreciate going downstairs for a bag of potato chips, but it's really more a service than a moneymaker. But we do receive a small percentage from the machines.
Yeah, I was going to say my, and I wanted to confirm, my sense of it was that this was a very, very minor economic plus. It was more convenience. I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that this is not a negative expenditure on the part of the county.
No.
Just to elaborate on what Administrator Kuntz was saying, and it is a low amount, but we get 24% of gross sales out of those machines at a minimum of $200 a month. So it's revenue-producing.
That is, I mean, you know, it's, we don't resolve all of our economic issues with that, but on the other hand, it is a net gain for the county, and it is convenience for both employees and citizens. So it sounds, you know, like an awfully good way to go. And citywide is a vendor that I've heard of before, so they are certainly a reputable company.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the other commissioners? Is there a, is there a preference to put this on regular or consent for our next meeting?
I'm comfortable with consent.
I am as well.
Very well. Then we will put 2021-94 on next month, excuse me, next week's agenda under consent. Thank you. That brings us to 2021-96. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-96 is to approve a term and supply IFB 75-20 for Energy Tech Solutions, Maven Mechanical Services, and Odell Service Company. These are all HVA services related to facilities, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz will make further comments.
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Kuntz here for Facilities Management. We had 10 bidders respond to this bid, and we made a selection of three of the bidders, the lowest and the best prices to continue on, whether HVAC and mechanical services.
Are the, these are new contracts?
Some of the contracts are, but this is an ongoing contract. It's just that we had expired with our five-year term, so we had to go back out to bid. So this was allow us a one-year contract with up to four one-year renewals for the contract.
Gotcha. Any questions from the other commissioners? Is there a preference to put 2021-96 on consent or regular?
I'm comfortable with consent.
I think I am as well, yeah.
Very well. Yeah, that was kind of why I was asking the recurring vendors, because I feel more comfortable with that. So 2021-96 will be on for consent at our next meeting. That brings us to 2021-101. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-101 is to approve revical event licenses to Historic Downtown Liberty for 2021 events that mirror an awful lot of events in years past. This is also under Facilities, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz.
Please proceed.
Commissioners Donna Kuntz, Facilities Management. This is an ongoing agreement that we help provide with the City of Liberty in cooperation with their outreach programs and their events. This agreement has three separate items listed. This would make an agreement to allow them to hold their Liberty Cruise Nights, their annual Saturday farmers' markets, and a fall quilt walk under this agreement.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? This is something that does, as you say, come up on a pretty regular basis. I'm inclined to go to put it on for consent for our next meeting. Is there any other opinion?
I think that's perfect.
2021-101 will go on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-95.
Commissioners 2021-95, the feeled good resolution is to approve a donation from Mr. Joe Hall of golf items belonging to Bob James, a photo of Bob James, and an outlaw barbecue menu signed by James Ross. These are all, these are sons and grandsons of Jesse, Frank James and Jesse James. And this is from Parks?
Yes, Donna Kuntz, Deputy Counter Facilities, Administrator for Facilities. This includes 13 golf balls, two small leather cases, some golf covers, and a cloth bag that the items were carried around in by Bob James. These will be on display at our James Museum. One of the items, the museum, the menu cover is going to be temporarily in archives because we do rotating displays.
Okay. That's very generous of Mr. Hall. I've got to tell you, I don't play golf very often, but finding any of my golf balls after I played is certainly a challenge. I think we can congratulate these people for not having my skill set when it comes to golf. Well, this is very, this is very kind. I think one of the things that we would like to do would be to make sure that, you know, when we pass this, that we make sure that we send the appropriate letter of appreciation for this donation. It's very kind of him. Obviously, the James Farm and that facility is one that has a great deal of significance in this county. So in another addition to it makes it, it just enhances the attraction and the special place that it is. Questions or comments from the other commissioners?
Thank you.
No, just that I agree. It sounds like a generous donation, and if it helps enhance the, the, just James Museum, I think that's great, and I'm good with consent, of course.
Very well. 2021-95 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 10. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021 Ordinance 10 is to approve to impose a 2% tax for emergency telephone 911 service. Did a little bit of research on this. It is a voter-approved tax. We did some research to find out exactly when it was passed. We haven't absolutely identified that time at this point, and it is an annual renewal that we're going to do a little better job of identifying the timing on these. But the, the collection of this tax shall start on September 1. There's a reasonable assumption that perhaps that's the annual date that this does do. We'll get a little more detail, but I guess the major issue is it is a voter-mandated tax. So this is just to approve the implementation of that tax.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Since this does involve, in spite of the fact that it has been voted on, I think this is something that probably is most appropriate under our regular agenda so that any citizens who would care to comment may do so. But I do recall seeing documentation on this some years ago as I was going through some old ordinance. So unless there's any other thoughts, the contrary, 2021 Ordinance 10 will go on for regular session next?
I totally agree, yeah.
Are you good with that, Commissioner?
I am, yes.
By the way, I was just looking on here, do we have, is there an expectation on revenue that this would generate?
I don't think there's any specific dollar amounts in the ordinance.
Okay. That might be a good thing if it's something that we can?
Try to get some numbers on that.
Yeah, if we can get some projections, I think that would be helpful. That brings us to 2021-88. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-88 is a request from the public for a request for waiver of fees, interest, and penalties, penalties and taxes. That request is made by Fabricor Inc., and it's related to late payment of their, of their 2020 taxes. And that's the source of the request.
Thank you, I see that.
I'm not sure if there's anybody here?
The collector has come to the podium to address the issue. And Collector, if you would like to proceed when you're prepared, please do so.
Lydia McAvoy, Clay County Collector. And if you don't, with the commission's indulgence, I'm going to take a moment to refresh all of our recollections on these because we have not presented one of these in several years. There is a single statute that allows the only basis for waiver of interest and penalty, and that is clear and convincing evidence of an error on the part of the county in the calculation of taxes. So it seems to almost imply a math error. Because we are a first-class county, and we hold ourselves to a pretty high standard, and there's a very high expectation of the level of quality of service we can provide, we have historically stretched that to, that interpretation to include any specific county error that caused the payment to be late. You know, any procedure that we usually would have followed that we did not, you know, something like that that caused the payment to be late. And that is already a stretch as far as the statutes would allow. There is no other exception. Since there is only a single statute, the legal standard that the commission looks at is actually the same legal standard that I look at. So, and Legal Counsel can give an opinion, but he actually did many years ago on this exact issue, is the only way we could probably defer on this would be if the commission were aware of a county error that I was not aware of. In theory, an error could occur outside of the collector's office. But both the collector and assessor review these cases before they come to you and sign off on whether there was error in our office. I have a stat, sorry, I ran up the stairs. I have a statute that says I cannot charge this interest and penalty if I know I committed an error. So they don't come to you unless I am saying there was no error, because I will resolve it at my level if I know that there was an error. And that was also signed off by County Counsel many years ago, although if he has any further, you know, interest on that right now, I'd be happy to hear. This case that's before you is one of the most annoying types of situations that happen. And, but we absolutely can't move on it. This is one where the payment just never showed up in our office. We have no record of ever receiving it. I could go into the procedures that we follow to try to make sure that we don't lose mail. They are extensive. For example, we don't throw any paper away during tax season. We put it all in recycling bins. We put it all in bags with dates on them, and another party goes through them piece by piece before we actually throw them away. So, I mean, that's just one example of what we do. That being said, the post office had a really bad year, and things can happen, absolutely. But the reason we can never waive on the basis that it never showed up in our office is that every unscrupulous taxpayer would simply say, well, the check is in the mail, you know, I sent it to you. You know, it just, we can't crack that door. And we actually have a very, a very low number of claims of that even, maybe one or two a year. And I do also have to just say, anecdotally, I have had personal friends scream in my face that they are sure they mailed it, and they found it in a drawer the next December. So people can even be mistaken, even when they believe they're telling the truth, that they even sent the payment in the first place. So we just can't waive on this basis, in my humble opinion. But they do have their day in court, and although this is a commission action, my anticipation would be that I would always come to you because it would be my responsibility to share the factual scenario that indicates that there was no county error. And if there was any question from the taxpayer, I feel like it would be my responsibility to defend our actions in that situation, to show whether or not, you know, why I don't think it's error in my office. And there could probably be reasonable disagreement about that. In this particular case, the check just never showed up. There's just, no. And actually, the, the appellant, or whatever, however you would classify him, didn't submit any information. He came to our counter, was very upset, so I actually filled this form out for him because I was just like, look, this is all you can do, you know, if you won't. He wouldn't stop talking or go away. And so I was like, you know, let's just, let's send it to the commission and give them an opportunity to have your day in court if you want to come up and say your piece. There is a letter that was included that he had sent to us, but other than that, they actually didn't submit anything else other than the fact that they did write the check. There's all kinds of evidence here that they wrote the check, which I don't disagree with necessarily. I don't know, I never saw it. So that is, I would respectfully request that the, the request be denied on that basis. And since this is sort of a new day, we're probably going to have more of these now where the, because the commission is more approachable and we can have these discussions. If the commission ever has any concerns or indications of things that they would like to see in my office with the handling of these, or with tightening up anything that is currently not considered a county error, but if we did that procedure, it would be better, I'm more than happy to entertain that. Unfortunately, this one falls into a very unfortunate category that happens once or twice every year.
Okay. Is there anyone present on behalf, either the claimant or someone representing the claimant present today? I see no one. Yeah, I do share some of your recollections. This issue came up early in my first term in this office, and I do remember working on it. And in fact, prior to that, when I was in the state legislature, the, the person in collector's office at that time approached me with putting together legislation that was eventually passed, although I think it was someone else's, there were a number of bills on this, on this topic. The, the upshot of what I was approached with was the collector at that time acknowledged that there was an error made by the office, and they in fact wished to return the penalties and interest. However, they felt as though state law did not allow that. So myself and other people went forward and produced the legislation that you're referring to. Like I said, I believe it was someone else's specific legislation, but there were a number of us going in that direction.
And if I may, since we have two former legislators on the commission, there have been pushes over the years to soften this standard. And I just have to tell you, from serving 200,000 taxpayers for 10 years, the number of inquiries that we get, you cannot have any integrity, and you cannot sleep at night unless you hold the same standard to everyone. And so while in some circumstances this seems draconian, there are times when it absolutely has, I can't look at anyone and say that they have to pay if I know there are multiple exceptions. So unfortunately, I really don't want any more discretion. I know a lot of collectors say they do, but I don't know what my days would be like. You know, we would literally have to litigate. I'd have to have tax court or something. So it is good to hold the standard. The law places a very high responsibility on individuals, both to report their property, to look at their bill, to pay their bill, and to make sure it got paid and to make sure it clears. I think that's one other issue here is, early in January, we often have a lot of conversations over the counter about different things. And that first week of January, it's understandable to me why some things that, you know, I'm not sure whether or not they're county error, you know, but they could be. I'm saying, just give me a check right now, and, and we can, we'll be okay. But once we get past that, I mean, you have to check your bank account and make sure that things, you know, it's the, the onus begins to fall back onto the taxpayer the longer you go into the year, and it gets a stronger and stronger case that, that it was their responsibility to, to follow up and make sure that everything was okay.
I think in these matters, it, and I believe the legislation reflects that, and that is that it's a fairly hard line, a fairly black-and-white standard. I think ambiguity in the law is generally not a good thing, and when you're talking about the collection of taxes, I think as much clarity as can be expressed to taxpayers, the better. With that said, are there any questions? With that said, are there any questions, Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any questions?
Please, thank you. In, in terms of the statute that, that limits your, you know, ability here to compensate a company like this, who says they made the payment but you didn't receive it, first of all, thank you for, for following it, I mean, I, you know, I think that's the right thing to do, and it sounds like your interpretation is probably correct. Does it apply only to county collectors, or does it limit the actions of us as commissioners as well to your knowledge?
Well, and that might be a, a better question for legal counsel, but what I have been instructed by legal counsel in the past was, it simply says, interest and penalty shall be added to the bill, and the only exception is this. It is in my collector statutory scheme, but the same, when it says that they appeal to the commission, it repeats that same phrase again, that there has to be clear and convincing evidence of error in the calculation of taxes. It, it's, it's all in one thing, and it repeats that sentence again. So the implication is that the commission has the same standard, and there could be a situation sometime, like I said, where the county could be aware of an error that I'm not aware of, I don't know how that would happen, and I would hope that we would resolve that before a public meeting, but you know, maybe IT blew up and I didn't know, or something, I don't know. But we actually have litigated this issue where commissions and collectors have split on this exact kind of thing, because it was the same exact, the, the commission, just for political reasons, because they knew the person said you have to waive, Madam Collector, and we just really can't crack that door, because they were saying that she didn't have the envelope to prove, and she was like, well, it never came, so here's that. But anyway, so we've actually litigated that issue to preserve the integrity of the law that if there is no other evidence that the commission could have, or other opinion that the commission could have on a particular case, that we do need to stick, you know, stick together on it. But I do always welcome, you know, if, if we have enough of these, and, and a commissioner comes down to me and says, look, you need to do something, you know, different, then I would look at that and, and be more than happy to consider improvements.
Well, and if you didn't get the check, though, you didn't get the, I mean, it sounds like there's nothing you could have done in your office, but you, you said we've litigated, you, you mean other county collectors, or you mean here in Clay County it's happened?
Um, I actually went and represented the Warren County Collector on a case against her own commission.
Okay, and, and, and what was the outcome of the, of the case? Because it does seem like an important question, whether or not the statute limits your actions with regard to waiving these fees, or if it applies to both.
We went through a lot of motions, and then they eventually dropped the case, the commission. There was an election that happened too, so that one of the commissioners that was really pushing the issue was no longer in office, so that the matter just sort of dropped.
Yeah, so, so I will be, thank you, I will be interested in county counsel's opinion, I don't know if you have one today, we're not disposing of this today anyway, so we have a week, or, or longer obviously if we want to, but.
I was, you anticipate what I was going to ask, and that was to ask county counsel if, at least my interpretation is correct, and that is that the commission is held to the same standard, we are an appeal, it, the metaphor that comes to my mind is if there was a, if, if somebody got a ticket for going 10 miles over the speed limit, and they appealed that judgment, it's not, we, we're not here to nullify the law, we're here to, to basically say, did it or did it not comply with the law? So we would, we would be in a position of being under the same constraints. Does that seem, and I realize you may want more time, Mr. Counselor, to, to research that, but does that on the face of it seem like a good assumption?
So the statute really focuses on that a taxpayer may approach the county commission to file an appeal when, quote, "an error or omission in determining taxes" has been made. And, and so that's really the, the threshold, initial standard, then it goes on to say, "If the county commission or governing body approves the refund, then such penalties, interest, or taxes shall be refunded as provided in later sections." The statute doesn't clearly say, or doesn't go so far as to say, "The county commission may only prove a refund if a finding of an error or omission has occurred," but I think that's a fair reading. It doesn't say it specifically that way, but clearly, as a, you know, kind of a predicate is that an error or omission has to have been made to begin with. And I will say also, just FYI, I'm sure this, sounds like this would go on regular, but I think the assessor also has an opinion on this, and I think she's out of town today, is my understanding, so, you know, she may want to give her two cents next week as well.
I, I do think that's, I mean, that is the way that, that I would interpret it as well, the, the idea of the commission setting aside state law is a, is a rather serious kind of a step to take.
If I, if I could, Counselor, because what, I don't want it to sound like I said something inappropriate in response to John's question when I said they quoted the same sentence, that section four says, "Any taxpayer claiming that the county made an error or omission in determining taxes owed." So again, while it may not say the same, the clear and convincing evidence of an error in the calculation of taxes, it does say that the county made an error or omission in determining taxes owed, so I think we're on the same page, I just want to clarify.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, that's the same quote that I read, that's right.
Right, okay, I just want to clarify, because I, I did tell John that it used the same sentence, I guess it's not the same exact words, it's just the same concept, in my humble opinion.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have any questions or anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Commissioner, actually, most of my questions were already brought up by my fellow commissioners, so I'd be curious to see what the, what the assessors' take on this is. I would recommend maybe we probably just keep this on regular agenda.
I think so, I mean, we, we, there, there appears to be a citizen queued up to make comment, but I tend to agree for two reasons, one is there is a degree of controversy, and the second reason that, that I would be, when we get to that point recommending regular is to give any citizen the maximum amount of latitude in appealing any of these actions, and giving them every opportunity to, to assert their, their right to appeal.
And just to clarify, yes, I think the whole point of this is to give the taxpayer an opportunity to just, you know, state their case again, obviously, and to hold me accountable. But the reason the assessor signs off as well is that there would be a separate body of error that could be, could happen on their side, in other words, they didn't add a car when they were told to, or they didn't take off a car when they were told to. The assessor would have nothing to do with, you know, whether or not the check was received in my office, so I'm not saying that, you know, you shouldn't listen to her if she has something to say, but she, you know, the, the reason there's two separate signatures is because there would be two separate mechanisms for error to occur. And I do know, I want to just address, that the, there's an allegation that the taxpayer called in and was told, you know, that we were behind in processing payments. I don't know if anyone used the word "behind," but at that time of year, it is not at all behind or erroneous at all to, for there to be several business days between when you mailed a check for us to guarantee whether or not we received it. And so I think that's what the taxpayer was told, was we, you know, we're still processing checks that were mailed around that time, and so we can't guarantee other way. One thing that we offer for taxpayers, because there are taxpayers that are just terribly concerned because their check has not cleared, and they're checking with us before December 31st, which is highly responsible behavior that we want to reward, we ask them to write another check, and we keep it in the vault, and promise them we won't cash it, and we wait until what we call the dust clears, you know, 10th day of January, give or take, when, you know, most things have arrived and been processed, and if their payment never shows up, we will then post that payment that they gave us, and they can stop payment on that other check, and, and it's all good. So there is a mechanism for taxpayers that are concerned about a physical check not being cashed towards the end of the year, but again, they have to be vigilant to make that inquiry before December 31st, because that's, you know, they should be checking to see if it, to see if it cleared, and if you wait until the last minute, which this taxpayer did not, but then you don't have that option. So that is definitely something we would have offered. So I, I don't know who heard the word "behind" or used the word "behind," but we did not get excessively behind at all in processing this year. It's, it's a week to 10 days before we have any idea whether your check was, got to us, obviously, because of postal and all that, so.
I see a citizen has queued up, so if that citizen would like to come forward, and I would just remind them to identify themselves, and this is of course speaking on the subject of 2021-88, please proceed.
Yeah, Bob Oaks Gladstone, I think I can speak for almost 100% of Clay County, of what a wonderful job Lydia McAvoy does for the county. And one thing I think about this point in time with COVID, have you all thought about what kind of arrangements, financial arrangements you could make to the public for situations like this, or similar to it, or whatever? It may be, if you hadn't thought about it, it may be an option for consideration to say, what kind of rules would we do to allow extension? I know a lot of the utility companies are doing that, and so forth, just a, just a thought, okay? But thank you, Lydia.
Appreciate the suggestion, certainly we appreciate the kind remarks directed to the Collector's office.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't pay him to do that. I do have one comment on that, because a lot of taxpayers said things like, you know, you were closed, because we were, the county was, county buildings were closed between March and June, and so while it would have been awesome for the governor to give some relief, it would have had to come from them, I don't know that the county commission could have done that, they did not, there were always options to pay, first of all, from March to June, all taxes are past due at that time, so there was never a time when we were closed, when tax, current taxes were due. But during that time, we answered our phones 24/7, we answered every email, we always have online payments, and we have two outdoor drop boxes, one at each location. That is the safest way to drop a, to give us a physical payment, if you don't want to pay online, because those are hand-processed every day, it's locked, it's all that. So those options were always there. I do know COVID affected a lot of people financially, but I don't feel like the collector's ability to take payments during tax season was significantly limited in any way, and as a matter of fact, we had a greater percentage of online payments than we've ever had, so a lot of people took advantage of that and went ahead and got paid. Our collection amount in December was precisely the same as previous Decembers, so seems like the same number of people were able to pay as, as in other years.
Okay, are there any further comments from the Commissioner's questions? I, I think the sense of it that I get is that the commission is good with putting this on regular for the next meeting?
Yes.
Very well. 2021-88, we'll go on to our regular agenda next week. That brings us to 2021-100, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-100 is to improve the employment agreement with your humble interim administrator, and that's my comment.
This is obviously a contract. Mr. Counselor, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Since, maybe it's more appropriate for me to run through it real quick than the administrator.
I thought that would be, yes, it seemed to.
The key points is, it's essentially a, a six-month agreement that would run through September 30th of this year, and it can renew past that if no action is taken, and, and also it, it's essentially though a 90-day agreement in that either party can exit out of the agreement, either party, for not, within 90 days. The pay is set at 127,500, as I recall, there are a number of duties set forth in the contract, and obligations of both the county and the administrator, but, but those are the, the key takeaways, is the term and the amount of pay.
And I've got to tell you, the, this is a marked improvement over some past agreements that have come by my, come under my notice, so I, I appreciate the, the contract as it is, it's, I, I think it's, I think it's, I think we are improving our, stepping up our game when it comes to these kinds of agreements.
And one thing I'll say, maybe just to, to address it out there, you know, I think the, the current salary, I believe, is at 120, it's moving to 127,500 on a, you know, pro-rata basis. That is particularly because Steve Cirx was here for two months, paid $10,000 a month to do budget work, and all those duties are now going to, to flow to the, the interim county administrator.
So there was a transitional quality to that. Obviously Captain Cirx was, provided some very valuable service to the county, but he is no longer with us, so those duties that he had performed, although they have been reduced since we're through budget, and many of those still are there, and they would fall to the administrator.
That, that's right.
Very well. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No, thank you.
Okay, any comments from the public on this particular item? This is 2021-100. Please remember to identify yourself and make sure, yes, your mic is on.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Jim Oldbecken. I just, I have two comments about the employment agreement, and just wish to say, first of all, I am delighted and grateful for the experience that we have in our administrator, and this is wonderful, and he deserves our support, and I was grateful for Mr. Salisbury taking time to visit with me just a couple weeks ago. Just two items I'd like to comment on, on page five, paragraph six, outside activities. You'll see where I'm going in just a second, but I'll read it to you. "The parties agree that the employee may engage in outside activities, such as, so on and so forth, not to exceed 10 hours per week without prior approval." And I am familiar with employment agreements, I believe they're really important, especially for such incredibly important people in positions. The word "activities" is troublesome for me, because typically, in the area of outside activities or outside employment, anything that would, an employee could be involved with that would detract from their work is very appropriate, but typically, it, I, I believe a provision like this is in regards to paid employment. The word, the word "activity," I won't read it to you, but I just looked it up in the dictionary Webster's, and, I mean, it goes into all sorts of things, and to me, this is adverse to the employee, to, to have something in writing that says, "You cannot engage in any activity if it's more than 10 hours, not to exceed, without prior approval." If it's agreeable to you, I think it'd be worthwhile to consider changing the word "activity," which is incredibly vague, also unenforceable, and, and go with paid employment.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah, appreciate that, drawing our attention to that.
Under 15, paragraph 15 on page seven, it references the county constitution. The, there's a policy of the county, Oaths of Office, GS 046, which covers, it's, the function is, "A signed oath shall be taken by various elected and appointed officials before discharging duties of office." And earlier this year, after making a request, the court was kind enough to provide me with the executed, signed oath of office, which I consider a very important thing. It's, again, it was the first, well, I won't get into the history, but I did make a request, when I made this request, I did receive oath of office for a number of individuals, actually everyone at the table, with the exception of the administrator, and I asked about that, and they indicated it was not required by law. And I have a couple of observations. First of all, I think it is required by law, in fact, actually, the policy, because it references various, which is unspecified, elected and appointed officials. And just very briefly, in my opinion, there is no higher official, appointed official, than the administrator, who is over employees and all these operations, including a number of people, actually many, who do take oath of office. I think it's an easy thing to do, I would recommend that it be in here, and I recommend looking at this policy for updating. And to me, it would be appropriate to specify in a policy that is updated on oaths, who is included, who is required to take the oath. And then while you're at it, there could be some nice things that are added to make it a esteemed, significant event as it is, ceremony, family pictures, but, but in particular, let's know who that is. And I believe that when we offer, you know, elevate the importance of that function, I mean, it's not a checkbox, I mean, it's more, it means more than that, I know it does, we actually give added support to those people and honor their commitment. We actually give added support to those people and honor their commitment. And certainly, it is no small thing to get to this point, to be at that table in this room. And I, I commend you all. You've done things I could never do, and your experience all these years and being here, you know, in this position is, is incredible. And we need, I think it's great to honor that. So, but the, I, I want to close by saying that in regard to oath of office, you know, the comment that somebody is not required to take an oath of office under the law, Clay County, or whatever it may be, state, federal, I, I don't think that prevents somebody from being asked or offering or required to do something that takes under a minute, the oath of office. And one thing that I think is a no-brainer, the oath of office that I have for the county, there is no reference in there to the, to support and obey and defend the Clay County Constitution. We do have one. And if we're going to say to the federal government with, you know, United States Constitution, state constitution, I think, would it be reasonable to you to add Clay County Constitution to the oath of office?
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. That's much appreciated. On the points with the, the contract, I, I think that, as Mr. Salisbury is our interim, I think those are certainly issues that we would want to consider as we move towards a permanent. And so, that might be the appropriate time to, to roll some of those considerations in. And I, I've got to tell you, yes, the, the idea of putting the, also the oath to the county constitution has crossed my mind, but I think that that's probably something best left for the future, possibly, when we have the next set of elections in advance of that. But it is something to consider. So, I appreciate you bringing that forward to us. Thank you.
Just a very brief comment. Actually, it's not related to this, so I'll save it for later. Thank you.
Thank you. I see another citizen is queued up. Are you also wanting to comment on twenty twenty-one one hundred? Very well, please proceed.
Yeah, Bob Oaks Gladstone. One comment I, I make on this, this agreement, it seems to be different than the Constitution. In some places, it's more than the Constitution, other places, it's less than the Constitution. Seems to be a discrepancy between someone must live, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Salisbury lives in Clay County, but says somebody must live in Clay County within six months. Well, this contract is only for six months, so that if, if you did this again with somebody else, it implies that every six months, the person would not ever have to move to Clay County, you could just up it and up it and up it. And then, my, my real question is this, where are we with getting a, a new county administrator? Are we going to offer this to Tom? Or are we pursuing, having applicants right now? What is the status on that?
Commissioner, if I may, I think that's outside of the topic of this. I think that's going to run afoul of the sunshine law to have that discussion.
Yeah, it, because then we're talking about, the, the, excuse me, Counselor is, is correct. I'm going to make some reference to that a little later on in the meeting, but as we start talking about things that have not been noticed up, obviously, the sunshine law is limitations, is, is limitation on what we, as government, do. Sunshine law is not applicable to citizens, so certainly, you can make those comments and suggestions, but for us to then engage in that conversation, I think it very easily be construed as the Commission, as an official body, having a discussion on an item that was not properly noticed under sunshine law. So, I, I think that's something that I, I think, you know, like I said, we, we've heard your comments, but I think, I, I think Counsel brings up a, a good point. So, I, I think we will let your comments stand as they are.
Right. And I think, I think Tom is a great candidate. Thank you.
By the way, and, and I do appreciate the, the universal, the, the universal good reviews that our county administrator has been receiving. We certainly are very pleased with the, the job performance that he has displayed, and I think will continue to display for the rest of the time he is in office. So, we certainly appreciate the, the positive comments about, about Administrator.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. There are no further comments on twenty twenty-one one hundred? Is that regular or consent? Is there a recommendation from Counsel on that?
Not necessarily, I mean, I, I don't think. I mean, I think it could be either, and I think it's a pleasure of the Commission.
Very well. Does the Commission have an opinion on this?
I, I don't. I'm, I'm contemplating either one.
I, I'm fine with consent. I mean, it's, it's an ongoing contractual relationship with our county administrator. For me, it's good as consent.
I think that makes sense. So, we will put twenty twenty-one dash one hundred on for our consent agenda for next week. That brings us to our final item, that would be twenty twenty-one one oh three. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, twenty twenty-one dash one oh three is to approve primary and alternate representatives from the Commission to outside boards and commissions.
Thank you. This is an item that I had brought forward under our constitution. For many of these boards and commissions, I have the ability to nominate with the approval of the, the Commission. I have a, a number of them here. What is in our resolution, twenty twenty-one dash one oh three? Excuse me, I believe they are blank. And I would like to go ahead and read the names that I would be nominating for those positions. And then we can discuss from there, and then make the determination as to whether this belongs on regular or consent agenda. Under MARK, TTPC, which is Total Transportation Policy Committee, M, as MARK is, by the way, Mid-America Regional Council, for those who don't, are not familiar with the acronym. The primary would be myself, residing Commissioner, the alternate would be Megan Thompson. The, there's also a MARK TTPC, Total Transportation Committee, secondary position, and that has been traditionally put for, for a member of our staff. I would recommend Carl Walters, with the alternate being Terry Griffin. The MARK Missouri STP, which is Surface Transportation Priorities Committee, I would put myself on there as the primary, and I would recommend Commissioner Carpenter as the alternate. On the Missouri Extension Council, that is a position that I have been occupying for some time. I would recommend that Commissioner Thompson would be the primary, and then Commissioner Carpenter would be the alternate on that. The North Kansas City TIF Commission, TIF standing for Tax Income and Financing. There are a number of our municipalities that have TIF commissions, and they have seats for the, for the county to be able to fill. I am at present a member of that TIF commission. I would recommend that replacing me would be Commissioner Carpenter as the primary, and then I would be the alternate on the North Kansas City TIF commission. And then finally, the Liberty Economic Development Sales Tax Board, which is a similar body. Right now, I am the primary on that. I would recommend that Commissioner Thompson become the primary on that, and then I would be her alternate. Those are the recommendations I would like to put forward. I think it's important that we, that we start filling these, now that we have, have a number of the jobs that we had to do, not the least of which was budget. So, these are important, especially the transportation issues. So, I would like to see us go ahead and take that up at our next meeting with those names. I believe those persons I named are, are okay with being placed in those positions, but with that, I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, no, thank you. I think this is a smart thing to do, and I think the outline here, in terms of the primaries and the alternates, makes a lot of sense in terms of shared responsibility and geographic breakdown and all that. So, I, I think it's great.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I agree with Commissioner Carpenter, and I'm happy to serve on wherever I'm needed.
Well, that's, the thing is, I think we have a, a Commission that is much more cohesive and, and ready to step forward. By way of follow-up information, there are, will be other boards and commissions that will be coming up in the future, but this is the, sort of, the first wave. Certainly, I will be, as I did on this set of appointments, consulting with the Administrator, which is not only a constitutional responsibility for me to perform, but I have a great deal of confidence in the judgment of the county administrator, and his opinion is always one that I take quite seriously. So, with that, does, would the Commission like to put that on regular or consent? I don't know, Mr. Counselor, if there's a real hard line on that one.
No, again, if it's, if it's consent, it would just be with the direct, or I guess, either way, with the direction to place those names in the appropriate boxes.
Correct. So, is there an opinion from the Commission as far as?
Perfect. Yep, consent.
Consent?
That's fine.
Very well. That means that we will place twenty twenty-one one oh three on the consent agenda for our next meeting. That completes our regular agenda. Is there a, is there a motion related to placing these items on next week's agenda? I could go ahead. Okay, very well.
Yeah. So, I will make that motion that we put twenty twenty-one ninety-nine, twenty twenty-one ninety, twenty twenty-one, ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one ninety-two, twenty twenty-one ninety-three, twenty twenty-one eighty-nine, twenty twenty-one ninety-eight, twenty twenty-one ninety-four, twenty twenty-one ninety-six, twenty twenty-one one oh one, twenty twenty-one ninety-five, twenty twenty-one one hundred, and twenty twenty-one one oh three on the consent agenda. And twenty twenty-one ninety-one, twenty twenty-one ninety-seven, twenty twenty-one one oh two, twenty twenty-one ordinance ten, and twenty twenty-one eighty-eight on the regular agenda.
Thank you. Motion has been made to place the listed items on the consent and regular agenda for our next meeting, which will be Wednesday, April fourteen. Is there any discussion on the, on the motion? Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Any comment from the audience? I see none. Commissioner Carpenter, you are free to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. The, yes. Wait a minute, point of, I'm not sure, point of order can be taken by a, a member not of the?
Yeah, I think that's right. There's.
Of board.
You can, you could, you could ask for public comments on the motion.
Yeah. I tell you what, just in, just for the sake of trying to make sure that, that there's an amount of openness, what I will do is, if it's, if it's okay with the Commission, I will, just for a moment, reopen comments on that motion to allow the citizen to comment. And then, unless there's a, a motion to reconsider, we will just hear the comment, and then either reconsider it or move on to the next item of business. Is that acceptable to?
Perfectly fine with me, yep.
The motion is still pending, right? They haven't voted yet?
No, they, it is voted.
They did, they did.
Yeah, so I'm, what I'm asking for is if, if we could hold it open, if it's, if, if I can, I don't want to go through the whole suspend the rule stuff, but just hold it open informally, allow the comment of the citizen. Then, if that citizen's comment spurs a, a reaction by a Commissioner to reconsider, we will do it at that time. Otherwise, the vote will stand.
That's right.
Please go to the podium and, and give us your opinion.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go on up to the mic. By the way, as, as the citizen makes their way up to the mic, I realize sometimes we move a little bit quickly, but do try to be timely in your, if you would like to speak on a particular item. With that, please identify yourself and, and.
All right, Bob Oaks again. Point of order is this, there seems to be a confusion between the Constitution and your voting procedure. If I understand correctly, if no one votes, that is assumed to be a no vote, okay? And it is not being shown up, when you approve the ordinances, you are signing those ordinances as you voted. I don't believe that you can sign an ordinance if you did not vote.
I'm sorry, if, 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 when you say you, are you talking about me in particular?
I'm talking about the presiding, because you're not voting. Is it not true that you are a negative vote when you don't vote?
No, that is not true. The passage, and I would defer to the county counselor on this, but the specific item you're talking about refers to, I think, associate commissioners, not the presiding. Does that sound about right, Mr. Counselor?
It is. Again, we, we are well outside of the boundary of a conversation on the pending motion.
Right.
Motion that's been voted on. I think what we're really into is public comments, which of course should not, should not engage a discussion with the Commission.
Right.
This is a, this is a non-agenda item at this point.
Right. So, at that point, I, I think, now that I know what it, because I didn't know what it was you were going to refer to, but I, I tend to agree with the Counselor. I, I would be happy to bring this up, because this would be a, this would still be a non-agenda item.
This is a non-agenda item, that's right.
Okay. So, yeah, well, the thing is, no, the presiding commissioner is not allowed to vote, except in the case of a tie or some other circumstance.
So, what, what, we're in the Constitution to say you are restricted from voting?
Again, we are way outside of, I mean, you, you can ask the question, but we can't engage in a discussion, because that's not, it's not an agenda item. It's not something, the sunshine law would say that if we're going to have a substantive conversation about something, the public is entitled to have notice of that. And, and so, the question about that, that you've raised, certainly falls in that category.
Okay.
But certainly.
Why don't I send you some more emails, and you can respond to me that way, too? I appreciate it.
That might be, that might be a better way to go.
Yeah.
But certainly appreciate your, your interest and your, and your inquiry. With that, I assume there will be.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is no motion to reconsider the vote, that we will, the vote will stand, and that will bring us to comments on, excuse me, non-agenda items. Before we get started, I do want to, I want to make some, a clarification. The County Commission strongly encourages, obviously, citizens to participate in the county's government, and we try our best, of course, to allow the latitude, the greatest latitude possible. But for any item that is not on the county's agenda, we just had a discussion that was along those lines, citizens aren't able to address the Commission on comments on non-agenda items for that portion of the meeting, but with the understanding that the county elected officials and staff may not be able to answer them for the very reason that was just under discussion, and that is, we are not able to involve ourselves into a substantive discussion on an item that has not been noticed up. And this is due to the county's need to comply with Missouri sunshine law and the, and the requirement that the public be on notice when substantive discussions of county business take place. As I say, the, the sunshine law is there to limit government. Citizens are, of course, free within reasonable bounds of, to, to be able to express their opinion on these issues, but we, as government, are under that particular limitation. So, that being said, we will go ahead and proceed with comments on non-agenda items. The first subheading under that would be public comments on non-agenda items. If there are any citizens that would care to comment on that basis, please approach the, the podium, make sure your mic is on, and identify yourselves. I see a citizen is there, so please proceed, sir.
My name is Robert Sanders, and I'm the developer at Prairie Field Subdivision, representing Meridian Properties. We are also building the Villas. I own Westland Construction. It's come to light that there's concern from the neighbors in regard to the sewage system and how it's progressed, and to be honest, it's been a frustration for all of us. But we're, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. The lift station, the pumps have finally arrived. They were made in Scandinavia, and they arrived this last week, and delays with COVID and shipping and all this stuff. So, they're saying, within two weeks, we'll have our lift station, which is adjacent to Plattsburgh Road, finished up. And following that, we'll get a fence around it and landscaping, so that'll all look nice. Then that sewage is pumped north and then back east to where our final treatment facility is being built. They did corrings this last week. We got engineers report and structural steel design yesterday. They said we'll have rebar on the job the twentieth of April. They'll be there just prior to that to start construction. The company that's doing it, we have hired, Meridian has hired directly, rather than going through Elm Hills or Central State, who is, who has a certificate of convenience on the sewage, that property. We've hired them directly, and it's called. We've hired them directly, and it's called Urban Built Constructors. They're out of Chillicothe, and they're a well-known company for building treatment facilities like this. And when it's built, it's not going to be just a package-type plant, it's a full treatment facility, and it's state-of-the-art, and it's going to be large enough for the whole project, future phases, and so we won't have to go through construction on the next phase, it just be able to tie into what we've got. Construction, they've tried to be fairly, they try to give themselves quite a bit of flexibility in the actual timeline, not knowing exactly how the weather would cooperate and whatnot. I believe all the parts, the pumps, the aerators, everything that goes along with the facility has already been ordered, or it's on hand. So we shouldn't run into a delay on that. They have told me that 90 to 120 days, they feel like they can get this done, but they feel like they need a little bit more cushion just to be certain. And, you know, possibly we build in some rain days or weather days, or, you know, something to the effect that if they don't get parts, but I'm very confident. I, I can finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's been, like I say, it's been a long, hard process. I don't know, is there anything else, Kip, that, that I need to address in regard to timeline, or?
Well, once again, though, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit apprehensive.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with, I mean, obviously, a citizen can make the comments a citizen would like to make. I think pulling staff with the commission in, again, creates that discussion that I think we get, we get close to the line with. So I, I should probably share your discomfort with pulling questions into staff or the commission.
Yes. But certainly, we appreciate your, your being here and making comments, and please continue with, with any other comments that you, you might have on this.
And I appreciate your all's patience with this, and like I say, it's been as frustrating to us as it is to everybody involved, but it is nearing an end. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's going to progress quickly at this point. And I do want to make one other comment. I haven't been to a commission meeting of any type for a couple of years, and I want to commend you all on running a very professional meeting, and each one of you commissioners for what you're doing.
We certainly appreciate that, and due credit needs to go to our administrator and the staff as well. They, they do a great deal of work that doesn't necessarily show up at each meeting, so thank you for those kind words. Are there any other comments from citizens on non-agenda items? I see one other citizen approaching the, the podium.
Bob Oaks.
I'll go ahead and repeat your name one more time. I didn't quite, I want to make sure it gets on the recording, so go ahead and repeat your name again, please.
Do what now?
I didn't quite catch your name. I don't know.
Okay, Bob Oaks.
Thank you.
I have questions about some of the questions that I've, that I've raised before, and, and I'd like to see things like on the online, when you look at the, it says meeting schedule, but you don't know what the meeting is until you click on it. Can't we put what that meeting is, instead of just saying, there's a meeting at 10 o'clock, and you got to click on it, you find out, oh, it's a, it's a ribbon cutting someplace, you know, that type of thing? And they're, and they're called meetings. I have a bunch of them, and I won't list them all, because I'm going to send you an email. And there's a lot of them that say that they're all meetings. Where do you find the notes for those meetings? In my experience, if you have a gathering and you don't take notes, it's not a meeting at all. So somebody needs to be taking notes on that. We never know if any of you attend those ribbon cuttings and the, you know, specific events and that type of thing. And we should, we should know, you know, what you're doing. Are you going out there supporting these things or not supporting these things? And like I say, I'll send you an email. But then I, I have a big question about who can sign an ordinance? The three of you, okay? So John, for instance, if you vote no on an ordinance, will you still sign your name to that ordinance? The paper copy?
Yeah, we should withhold, again, responses for something like that. That's, I think, a violation of sunshine law.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think, by the way, something I think I can answer. As far as the meetings go, we comply with our meetings the best possible, but the meetings listed are sometimes not county meetings, so therefore, we're not, we don't have those particular minutes. If, if it's, if it's a meeting by some other body and we happen to be attending, it's not our meeting, so we don't have control over that.
Well, I noticed there's been a change of wording on the ordinances from last year to this year, because it used to say, any commissioner, you know what I'm going to say, don't you? Any commissioner that voted in the affirmative may sign this ordinance, which implies that if you did not vote for it, that you should not sign it. And now this year, it just says, anyone can sign it. So that would, could mean, Jerry, for instance, let's say you don't sign it, or you, you do sign it, but you didn't vote, and the other two don't have to sign it. So you voted, you have signed something that you didn't even vote for, and it says you're possible to do that. I'm, I'm just totally confused there, and, and it may be that we have a lot of confusion with the Constitution, you know, that was kind of thrown together real quickly and not well thought out on some of these situations, that may need to be, you know, improved in years to come, so.
Well, I'd be certainly happy to talk to you kind of offline, so to speak, when we don't have concerns about sunshine. I'd be happy to go through some of those with you.
Yeah. And why don't I just go ahead and send, send you my list instead of taking all this time, because Mr. Salisbury has talked about some of the things, and some of the things may be in progress and so forth, so you can, you can give me a, you know, a status on it, because I, I hate to keep adding to this list and keep growing and checking on it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, we do certainly appreciate the, the patience of, of citizens as we work to improve the government. I think there's an understanding that we don't have a magic wand to change everything, but we are a work in progress, so we appreciate your comments and suggestions.
I really appreciate the opportunity, and, and I just hope more of our citizens will come out and, and have input, and I'm thankful that you're doing the evening meetings to allow people that opportunity, because I know 10 o'clock is, is hard for people unless they're retired like me and, you know, and a couch potato sometimes.
Thank you. I believe we have another citizen queued up?
My name is Jim Oldbecken. We just had an election this past week. I checked the election board for turnout. Our turnout was 9.9% of registered voters, and of eligible voters, it was 8.2. This is a steady, steady decline, and I was looking on national voter turnouts around the world, and the United States of America is at 185. Do those numbers concern the commissioners, and what happens if it gets worse?
I don't know that that's a substantive thing, but certainly, I think we all, I mean, what we are doing right now is, is encouraging the participation of citizens. We encourage the participation of a citizen to comment, and we absolutely, I don't think it's a particular breaking news that we, as a commission, support as many informed voters get out of vote as they can. That is the single most important thing a citizen can do is vote, and it is something we would encourage.
How much lower can voter turnout be? And then the, we're talking about citizen participation. In this room right now, there are two of us that are not being paid by the county to be here. When does it get to be untenable with this low of a turnout, because we all, you know, verbally assent to the importance of citizen involvement? But how much worse can it get before it's a problem? Or is it a problem now? Or will it never be a problem? And that's really all I have. I just want to keep this in front of us. I know it's not the business, but it's an issue.
We appreciate that. The thing is, we appreciate you raising concerns, because at least it raises the profile, so certainly, that's, that's something that we, we don't mind hearing.
Responsibility, of course, is on every single person to it, to address those issues. Show up ourselves and, and keep working on it, keep talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no one else lined up for public comments on non-agenda items? Are there any office holders on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Are there any agencies that would care to comment on non-agenda items? I see none. Would the county administrator have any items that he would like to comment on at this time?
I would, just briefly. It's been an interesting experience these past 90 days, roughly, to do this, and it's really been a great experience. I appreciate very much the kind words that were stated earlier, both from elected officials and also the public. But the real, real, real privilege that I've experienced in doing all this was working with and around a group of people that are absolutely dedicated to the good works of Clay County. They're people that are absolutely involved, totally engaged, in trying to do the best thing they can do for the citizens of Clay County, and it's been, it is, it is and has been a privilege to work around and with and for those people. I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate those kind words as a commission. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd care to make at this time?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do not.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments to make at this time?
Thank you. I do not.
I believe I also have talked out. With that, that brings us to approval of the minutes of previous sessions. We have one set, that is from March 18, 2021, 10 a.m. Is there a motion related to approval of the minutes of that particular session?
I'll make the motion to approve the March 18 of 2021, 10 a.m.
Motion has been made for the approval of the March 18, 2021, 10 a.m. minutes. Discussion? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson? Yes? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports. I believe we have received some. Would the clerk care to proceed on that, on that point?
Yes, we emailed out reports for, one was from the March report from the county auditor on a cash basis, and the other report was a March report on, from the county clerk on fees and revenue.
Very good. Did both the associate commissioners get those reports?
Yes, thank you.
I did as well, so that, they have been delivered, and I assume the administrator has also received those reports. Very good. That brings us, is there any other further written reports to this commission? Seeing none. Executive session, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session and to adjourn therefrom. We are noticed for legal, under Missouri Statute 610.021, parentheses, 1, and real estate, the same chapter, parentheses, 2. Is there a motion related to that?
I'm sure that we move into executive session at this time.
Motion has been made to move into executive session from legal and real estate and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson? Yes?
That, that concludes the public portion of our meeting today. We will go into executive session and adjourn therefrom. Thank you very much.